...for calculations or conclusions that stormwater runoff will be reduced when this project is constructed. This project has been reviewed and approved by the Technical Review Committee. As part of our alteration of terrain permit, the State Department of Environmental Services reconsented the stormwater runoff calculations and that alteration of terrain permit has been approved. The big issue last time was stormwater runoff. We meet your regulations, the seizure regulations on that issue with this plan. I want to address some of the objections we heard in the last hearing from the Butters. A lot of the objections had to do with the idea that this plan to modernize or add some new amenities is only a small part of some master development plan that the campground has and that this board should make us... As many of you board members correctly noted, you can't do that. The board has to consider the application in front of it, which is a relatively small site plan that has some needed amenities to the campground. Do you, the board of the town, have the ability to require any landowner to lay out a master plan for his or her property going into the future? The issue before the board today is whether the plan in front of you needs your site plan review regulations. My client understands that if they have other things that they want to do in the future, I don't know anything specific, I don't know what the plan does, they may or may not have plans. I don't know. But if they do, then obviously those plans require site plan review. They require special exceptions or variances or whatever. We understand that we have to come to the town, go through a process, to do it. But this issue today, the plan that we presented, is not something that we might present in the future. One of the other issues that you heard a lot about in the last hearing was a letter from Jim Haney at the U N A Center for Freshwater Biology that he was submitted to you. This is an undated letter. It does not appear to me that Mr. Haney's undated letter is a response to this specific site plan proposal for additional amenities. There is no... what he talks about in there is the proposed expansion and development. This is not an expansion project. We're not taking any of the acreage as the current use, other power use. We are constructing these amenities already developed area to the campground. Even if Mr. Haney's letter was written in response to this project, yet it's not in place. It suggests that Mr. Flores' calculations regarding stormwater runoff and the reduction of stormwater runoff are inaccurate or incorrect or anything like that. There is nothing to refute Mr. Flores' opinion that this project will reduce the amount of stormwater runoff going into the ponds that the campground and all the neighbors and Butters rely on. You also had, you know, there was Christ House in the last meeting, a re- ...application. Those meetings were held without notice from my client. Our federal and state constitutions, fundamental due process, requires that any meeting held by a town board to consider the pending application requires notice in the afternoon. I don't know where it's posted physically, you can see it on the website. But no notice was given to my client that the Conservation Commission would be meeting to discuss this application. As a result, we were unable to participate in that meeting. Their recommendation is the result of a flawed process. Think of the outrage if you folks held a meeting, a public hearing on this application and didn't provide- ...to the board. Because the Conservation Commission's recommendation was breached as part of an unlawful, unconstitutional process, this board is required to completely disregard the recommendation. You have before you, for today's hearings, recommendations from Mr. Woodruff, planning staff dated September 29, 2019. You recall that he had recommendations at the last hearing. Mr. Woodruff had requested or suggested some conditions of approval. I believe that those conditions of approval were based on discussions he had with the Three Ponds Association. I don't know if those discussions are not suggesting that those were improper. But what's interesting is having adopted some of their recommendations as part of these conditions, you now have a new set of suggested recommendations from the association, which I'll talk about in a minute. But to start with, I want the board to understand that we only got really one. Is my control?
Thank you. You need to...
Test one, two. So to start with, I want to be clear to the board that we only have one comment regarding Mr. Woodruff's conditions. Condition number seven on the September 29, 2019 staff recommendation indicates that we take water samples from wells in the campground and/or on participating embodied properties that have been tested by D E S. What we would suggest is that we initially take samples from the existing monitoring well in the campground holding. And then if those samples indicate any issues, we would then expand it to embodied properties as well. I just wanted to clarify, the hand orders a little bit vague, if you want to leave that open. Other than that one comment, we are agreeable to all of the suggested conditions of approval in Mr. Woodruff's staff report. That's the condition of approval for this particular project. You also, I believe- Those conditions are dated September 27. It's actually both the Protective Association and the Conservation Commission as part of the process that we did not receive notice of. And I believe there's also an email update today where they modified one of those conditions. Let me pick them up in order. And I'm not sure, the conditions that they propose have different numbering than I believe what Mr. Woodruff's current conditions have. So I apologize if there's some confusion going back and forth. But what they have proposed are the following. One of the conditions regards a quarterly inspection of the campground shoreline. Another here is to report on the status of stormwater runoff intention. It's made an inspection report to the land we serve. That's one of Mr. Woodruff's conditions that we agreed to. They want to add to this that the town reserves the right to conduct or contract its whole shoreline surveys for soil and sediment erosion sites inward participating shoreline inspections conducted by the campground. We think that's unnecessary, but don't have any particular objection to it if the board doesn't find it in the name of law. The second condition in the 9/27 correspondence of the Conservation Commission and Protective Association is on their number four, which has to do with the water samples I mentioned earlier. They want to add a condition that the town may contract additional testing with all costs to be covered by the applicant. I believe Mr. Woodruff has adopted that in his proposal dated 29. And we are agreeable to that particular condition as stated previously. The last condition suggested by the Three Ponds Protective Association, however, is more problematic for us. In the 9/27 correspondence, they are indicating that there should be a condition that the applicant shall apply for site plan review approval for all existing future structures, buildings, or amenities that have added or will add impermeable surfaces which are not on a site plan approved by the planning board. Today, by email, there's, I think, a modification or an option which basically from the association, which basically suggests a condition of approval that we be required to amend our plan and show any impermeable surfaces in the entire campground that are not shown on prior site plans. And in both cases, the association and Conservation Commission are asking as part of that condition, this board to adopt a statement that it's needed because there's a finding that the campground is in violation of the existing site plan review regulations for allegedly constructing facilities without the benefit of site plan review. We have a problem with all of that, and I'll go through it quickly. Number one, we disagree that there's been any development in the campground that violates the site plan review regulations. As I understand what the Association and Conservation Commission are driving at, it goes to the fact that on some camp sites, my client has- recreational vehicles as defined by federal law, which are recreational vehicles. To me, all it requires is that any recreational vehicle in the campground bring to the campground have. They place those on the site on the basis where they're there all season and through the off-season. We don't believe that that triggers site plan review. In our mind, that's no different than a camper leasing the site for a season, putting his or her individual camper on the site, maintaining it during the off-season there and moving for the next season. It's no change in the use, and we don't believe that that triggers site plan review. We believe that that is consistent with the position taken by the town staff who are charged with enforcing these ordinances. We have Georgia's worked closely with town staff. We have not been advised if there are any violations on site that would require corrective site plan review or new calculations or anything like that. Obviously, if there is, if the town staff brings something to our attention, it is our intention to deal with it. If there's a... we agree with the issue, we'll... whatever needs to be done to correct it. If we have a different interpretation, we will respectfully raise that in the appropriate forms. But I think it's a mistake for this board to usurp the authority of the town enforcement officials and then to refineing that my client's property is in violation of the existing ordinance. You folks don't have the ability to do that, and you shouldn't do that. We've been dealing with town staff who have the authority. We will continue to deal with it, and we will do our best to resolve issues with them if they're our opinion. Additionally, I don't think that this board can adopt sort of a set of super duper site plan regulations that only apply to my client. Saying that any impermeable structure requires a visit to the planning board, unless that's the case for everybody in town, is a special set of site plan regulations that apply to my client. And every time a camper pulls in, every time I pitch a camp which is impermeable, the campground doesn't have to even come back here and say, "Mother maya." Simply put, we will comply with the site plan regulations that have been adopted. We will abide by the regulations that apply to all landowners in the town of Milton. But this board cannot and should not spot legislating a special set of regulations or restrictions on our property. I want to be straight about it, but we will contest any condition of approval that treats the campground differently, meaning applying for future site plan review differently than any other property in the town. Finally, I want to, I guess, make an overall comment on behalf of my client. You know, we've sat pretty patiently and respectfully through a number of hearings, both here and at the C B A, as part of this process. My client has taken, I think, a lot of hits regarding his intentions here. I don't think those hits are justified, and I think we need to briefly respond to that. The idea that my client has no interest or concern with the protection of the Three Ponds is simply without merit. The ponds are central to the success of the campground. There'd be no campground if there was no ponds. My clients have a large investment in the properties in the campground, and therefore they have a large investment in the ponds. It makes no sense for my client to invest money in the campground in these amenities if that investment is going to damage one of our primary assets, such as our location on the pond. Where I sit, the town might be actually happy to have an operator that wants to invest in the property, that wants to maintain what has been a successful historical use of this property for many years, keep it viable, as opposed to just opening the gates each summer and letting it run down. You know, if someone let the property run down, that's when you'd be thinking about protecting the assets around it. We're investing money here, and we wouldn't be investing money if we thought the result of this was going to be to harm, damage, or ruin the ponds that we rely on for our business. I've heard a lot of comments, and obviously this has been a very passionate process over what's really a relatively small site plan. An attorney, Paul, was involved. I once asked him, "What are you looking for?" I still don't really know. The campground has been here for many years. It's a floor-able, successful use. The master plan for the town proposed for it is, as best I know, I think the campground is probably the primary vehicle for that. We want to make some relatively small changes to make sure the campground remains viable in 2019 and knock out the campground stuck in 1965 or 1975 or 1985. The opposition here worries me. Worries me because I'm not sure what happens if they're successful. This is a prime piece of property. If my client fails, if you manage to chase my client out of town, someone else is going to come in and buy that property. And maybe that property will be a campground. Maybe it will be another allowed use. I know there's other allowed uses because campground is my special exception. Maybe it'll be developed as a real family home. I don't know what will happen when the next person comes in. But sort of somebody buying it for conservation, someone's going to buy that property for an economically viable purpose. Right now, that property has historical purpose that has served the property, the landowner, and the town as well. We want to make some small changes. We have a few amenities to make sure that they're providing campers who we serve, the type of experience they expect in 2019, and to be sure that the campground remains viable going forward. The area that we're being... we're committed to being here and keeping these ponds healthy for all the people who benefit from that. We meet all of your site plan requirements. We ask you to approve the site plan with the conditions recommended by Mr. Woodruff, with the one exception that I mentioned, the number seven, requiring well monitoring only for my client's property first and then expanding to other properties. In fact, there's a problem from that initial goal. Thank you for your attention, and I'm certainly happy and again, to answer any questions that you have.
Before we move on further, Ms. Laura, my attorney, has something to read in.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. My name's Laura Harts. I'm a attorney on Reno in Concord, New Hampshire. And I represent several of the Butters that are here. And I'm relatively new to the process, but I know that all of you have been exposed to it for a long time. So I'm going to make my comments brief, but they're really important, so I hope they can give them some attention. And just one other point, several of my clients actually... I think just one of my clients would like to speak afterwards, so I'll let her do that. She was getting-
I'll let her do that.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you, sir. Of course, Mr. Chairman. Yes, thank you. Good. There's just three issues that I'd like to bring to your attention for the members of the public. And one of them was actually mentioned by Mr. Tilley. So thanks for bringing that up. And that was the issue of groundwater contamination. So groundwater contamination is something that all of the residents that draw down from the aquifer have something to be concerned about. It's not just limited to those who reside in the campground. So our request is that any groundwater monitoring, of course, be extended to the Butters. And one of the most important reasons, just to sort of highlight the importance of this fact, is the reality that the amenities, which is a pool, two to three water slides, several warming tubs, and a make-off course in addition to several hot tubs, all of the water facilities will take water from the- You'll note in the plans that although the wastewater from the pools is to be treated, it's to be treated in the mode off-site. So that water doesn't come back to the local water system here in Milton, which is problematic. Close one issue of the moving groundwater. The second, and I know this was mentioned previously, but that is the fundamental crisis of cyanobacteria. So I know there's been a study by Dr. Haynes over at U N H. And Mr. Tilley made a great point that it not... it wasn't necessarily as to the site plan application. And that's why it's all the more critical that we have an investigative study that reviews the impacts of those water slides at pool, those hot tubs, those warming tubs, that says exactly what the impact is going to be as a site plan application. And that is absolutely within your power to ask for and to require Mighty Joe to pay for. It's absolutely true that the success of Mighty Joe depends on the ponds that surround it, as does the success of the community. If that's true, then you would think that the applicant who's invested in the campground would want to pay to make sure that that happens, to make sure that there's no cyanobacteria contamination or algal bloom. Just to put a highlight on what a cyanobacteria algal bloom is, that's when there's contamination with phosphorus or nitrogen into the surface water. It creates, sometimes overnight, over a matter of hours, a bloom of algae that triggers and creates itself neurotoxins and liver toxins. And these toxins persist in the water even after the bloom is gone. So it's not like you can look at the pond and see that there's a problem. And there's a lot of lakes in New Hampshire that have already been subject to cyanobacteria algal blooms.
Are they okay around the zone?
Some of them do. Yes, yes. That's a great point. And just to highlight for the board, I have... you know, there's a procedure, of course, when there's an algal bloom. And this is what the flyer looks like, right? This is what you have to put on your beach, or this is what D E S would have to issue. This is the advisory, "Water currently not suitable for waiting or swimming." Unfortunately for a town that depends on tourism, this creates a really bad impression for people who are here for a short time who may not want to come back next year. So that's one thing that I'd like to submit to the record. And then, because I'm not a scientist, it's really important to have that- And it's hard to see, but these are the locations that have beach closers and water quality advisories as published by D E S, October 1, 2019. We do not want to see Milton on this map. That's not the goal here. In fact, the goal is to make sure that we never get on this map. And by working together, I think we can make that happen. We just have to make sure that there's enough science behind it. But we know that it's not going to happen. Because that swimming pool that's proposed is probably 600,000 gallons of water, right? I mean, that's much water in an Olympic sized swimming pool, which is a little bigger. But that doesn't consider the water in the water shoots, you know, the slash-down type activity. And as you'll note, each year, those facilities are also drained. And if I'm reading the site plan correctly, they're drained into a trench on-site. So, I mean, it's treated to reduce pouring, but this really small note here says that it drains into a trench on-site. And you know, that's not that far from the ponds. So we'd really like to see some assurance from a scientific, well-respected authority that can show that there's no danger of cyanobacteria, because we think there is one. And just a note on authority, I know there's been a lot of talk about what the role of the planning board is, and what the role of the public and the applicant, the Conservation Commission. But big picture, the goal is to work together to make sure that Milton continues. We know that Mighty Joe is important. We know that the campground is important. We just need to protect the town in Milton. So that's what we're asking for here. Thank you.
Okay. We'll bring it back to the board now, where I'm going to ask them if anyone would like to continue with any public comment. I will accept a motion to ye or nay on all public comments. Is that your motion?
There were some of us who didn't get to speak last time.
Excuse me?
I said there were some of us who didn't get to speak because of-
That's public comment, that's what we're discussing right now.
Okay.
Second? All in favor? What deliberation, Dan? Are we hearing?
Motion to reconsider.
No, sir.
That is silly, sir.
Are we going to stop? You had three hours last time. For all the public comment you want-
And we should have three hours tonight. This is a very important hearing.
No, sir. The public comment is closed. No, the public comment is closed.
You said she could speak.
I did not.
Yes, you did. You said you recognized her.
I said I had to be recognized.
The chair last time said I would be able to speak this time. He did.
He did.
I guess the only thing I would like to suggest is that the board wants to reconsider the public comment that we made. Because we didn't hear a lot last week, and I would urge you, the board does seem to mind that all the public here please be respectful of that. And there's really no need to go over the same comments that were made at the last public hearing. I don't think we need hours of public comments tonight, but maybe we could limit to one minute per person and go over five minutes or something. But that's up to them.
Why the motion to reconsider? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Full, whole thing.
What do you mean for the whole thing?
Stay specifically to the site plan. I don't want to hear anything else other than site plan. Get off into that, that's the end of it. Okay, is that clear? Is it clear? You can go first. You can go first.
Thank you. I'm Virginia Long. My name is Virginia Long. I'm resident of Milton. I would like to comment on the notion, well, the fact that there's calculated we let stormwater runoff, and this is admirable. But I want to make the point that we've had unprecedented floods all over the country in recent years. And floods would probably wash a lot of the breakaway waterways in the trench or on the holding pond, et cetera, in Milton. And the risk to Milton Tree Pond is not one we want to sustain. I wanted to address with the planning board, think about an analogy. Think about when you have a sick member of your family, maybe your mother, has a compromised immune system. You don't then send her to volunteer at a daycare center where she likes to go because there's too many concerns here. It's a too high a risk. Similarly, when we have water quality already at some risk, already compromised in the tree ponds, you don't add to the risk by adding extra amenities. Yes, they're taken care of. Yes, we're mandated across it. But if there's a bad incident, then the risk is too high. So I'm asking the planning board to consider that risk for the long-term future. It might not come next year. It might not come in five years. But we are getting more floods, and that risk is too high, and it will happen.
My name is Chuck Russell. I'm a selectman over in... And I have a couple of questions about the traffic flow. Now, just telling my exit for that. So it's obviously increased traffic. I'm sorry. There's no other place for the traffic to go other than downtown house. And I know you know that on a Sunday night, it's completely blocked off. Part of this based on the bridge was rebuilt for... Plan of review. If it is, what happens if Lebanon puts a referendum in front of people to vote down our part of the bridge so that there's construction, that had an impact on the exchange? Because my thought is when people come out of that bridge, come out of that campground, they look to the right, it's backed up all the way down to the stop sign. If that's a small road, they're going to turn left and go over to Lebanon. For our roads, we're trying to design to handle that impact of the travel that's going to go as people go around to the bridge, but it's going to be downtown. So if we were to bring a referendum for that for the next election, would that have an impact on your folks' position?
Yes, I don't...
You don't need to have a microphone. I'll just try to speak so that you can hear me.
We did make some recommendations for conditions of approval of the Conservation Commission and the DPA. Mr. Tillsley talked about those. He said that with respect to the... One of them had said the town reserve the right to conduct its own shoreline surveys for soil and sediment erosion. He said that he didn't think that was necessary, but that he would have no objection, but the applicant would have no objection to that. We think that's important. And it is not because we question Mr. Flores's calculations. But he says that there will be less runoff after development than before. That's wonderful. And I hope that's valid. But any engineering calculations are always subjected to verification by testing inspections. And that's the purpose of requiring these surveys. We have only asked that the town reserve the right to conduct its own. The recommendations of the town planner is that the campground conduct those shoreline inspections. By a third body professional. We would intend, if TPTA has done these kinds of surveys led by New Hampshire DES, 2009, 2010, 2011, we examined the shorelines of all three ponds led by DES, DEPTNA, and volunteers from DPA. We would, independent of this hearing, propose to the town board of selection that you approve such shoreline inspections as a way of verifying that the calculations on Mr. Flores are correct. We applaud you for putting that in your snow line and your plan. We know that you have... It's important. Protection is important to the applicant. It's important to us. That's why we put that recommendation, and we hope that you will include that. If you approve, that you will include that particular statement in the approval condition. The other one, I'm not going to spend too much time on because it addresses future developments and existing developments and not a site plan. The only reason we put that in there is because the site plan review regulations, your site plan review regulations, in the very beginning, in the authority statement, says, and I don't have it in front of me, but I'll abstract it. It says that no structure shall be erected except in conformity with the site plan approval by planning board. That is, in your site plan review regulations. Now, it's not in the ordinance. And so therefore, you might say, well, it's not really a requirement. But it certainly is your intent that for those things that are subject to site plan review regulations... Some residential developments, or multifamily developments, they require a site plan. And your own site plan review regulations state that no structure shall be erected except in conformity with a site plan approval. So we just said, as an approval condition to this, require them to submit a site plan. And I'm going to try to get to it here. For review approval for all existing and future structures, buildings, and amenities that have added or will add impervious surfaces, which are not on a site plan. We put impervious surfaces in there because we don't want to have to get into an argument of, well, these are not cabins, they're RVs, therefore they're not recoverable yards. Stormwater has no, doesn't discriminate as to what impervious surface is that is preventing water from penetrating into the ground.
You interrupt me, ma'am.
So that's all. That's the only reason.
We're getting off the amenities. Talking something else.
I know. So I would ask you, then, if you decide not to include this condition for approval, I would ask you to let us know who in town can make that a requirement that for anything that they do on the campground that adds to their...
You go for everybody.
Yeah, but who? Who will make that a requirement?
You could go in the zoning. You could go in the site plan review regulation.
Well, but as the... Would the code enforcement officer be the one?
Who's one of the...
Yes. So the code enforcement officer, then, should, when somebody wants to do something on a campground or any place in a multi, in a non-residential development, tell them that you must get approval for the site plan from the planning. So you've done that. You've told me that that's who should do it. So we will take it up with the code enforcement.
Virginia Long, just one comment. I understand that they're going to involve courts in three different areas. Sure, that's imperturbative. I'm just wondering if the board can consider that.
Let's move off course, Paul, here.
Does he?
Let's move off course.
There is. Okay. Thank you.
Astro turf. Move this back.
I'm Jenna King for the Lakeside Drive. I have a petition signed by over eighty residents of Milton, as well as some nonresidents in addition to that. Just stating their concern opposing the expansion with the amenities, saying that it's not in keeping with the master plan and vision of Milton and threatens our community. The amenities are designed to bring more people to the campground. We know that increased human activity in ponds can sustain. And what you're saying here now is you're going to have the box guarding the henhouse if you don't have anyone else checking up on the conditions, anyone else monitoring, anyone else doing inspections. And that seems very risky and can become very costly to the town, to the campground.
Although I'm not a resident here, our selectman did have a valid question, and I didn't see him get a response in reference to the roads and the travel and making Temple and decides that they're going to referendum on it and how that would affect this whole situation.
They won't give some day passes to the pool and the water slide?
No.
No.
Nope.
So why are they doing?
For the camps.
For the camps. They're going to charge you more for sites, or are you going to make a...
Since the campground, we have a certain number of sites where we highly use those sites. I mean, you can tell us that we can't use our existing approved site. That petition was taken. I haven't made a decision, but we'll try.
No, I think it's...
I don't know if prices will change or not, whether this will be a factor or not. But these amenities will serve him.
They definitely won't have any day passes or anything like that.
Won't be campers in their guests. They won't be open to the public. Won't be able to go to the...
They're going to get more guests there when they have the...
Yes, we're entitled to use the existing...
I understand. I've talked about the traffic.
I don't think people will have more guests, whether it's a pool or not, frankly. I'd rather have a pond than a pool, but is it possible? Sure. But your point is, you can't prevent the campground from using what they already have. The town can't stand in the way of us using the campground to its maximum potential to what you prove. I think every site should be built, not necessarily, but that can't be a basis for denying this application. These amenities, just like the so-called amenities that are there now, not much, will serve campers in their guests. They're AAs, they're work around, very clearly in the plan, just campers in the guests.
Right. Thank you for your firm statement. Thank you.
I just got a quick question. I heard that the campground season was extended till the first of November, where it used to end on Columbus Day. Is that true?
Week after Columbus used to always end. Close the week after Columbus.
Okay.
Can you state your name, please?
Rick Farland, Mollinburg.
Thank you.
I need to go up there. I just, the population of Mollinburg is 4,631 people. They're suing in the Supreme Court to add 95 camp sites. We know that right now. You've said that they can put 220 park models on their camp sites, increasing the capacity of their camp sites, which were four to seven right now, but now it's eight of their park models. You stated that in a previous meeting. So I just want to point out that if they get 95 sites and add it to what they have, it's going to be 2,500 people coming into the lakes from one site when the whole town is 4,600 people. You can't deny, they're suing to get more camp sites. This amenities-only package is hiding what's really going on. Thank you.
I'll see more public comment. I'm going to close it and bring you back to the board.
Do you need a motion to have deliberation? Town planner's comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I would move to include the additional requirement in item seven.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If you can just forward with any vote, would you give me an opportunity to speak on a couple of issues and on my recommendations?
Okay.
Is that public comment?
It is not public comment.
You just said you're going to...
I am the staff representative to the board. It's not public comment.
Are you also Mighty Joe camper still?
No, ma'am. I've not camped in Mighty Joe for a number of years. I find that comment and that question offensive.
But true.
Wait a minute. No, no, no. No, he is a planner. He's making planner comments. That's what he's doing.
I'm the town planner, and I have a right to talk to the board while they're in deliberative session.
Would you use the microphone, please?
All right.
Would you use the microphone, please?
No, ma'am.
What? To talk louder?
I will speak loud enough for everyone to hear me. Thank you. All right.
Should you respect any last?
I just wanted to remind the board that, again, at the last hearing, you did not approve one of the two waivers. And that the applicant has brought in the required renderings or elevations, and they're in the revised plans. Secondly, the revised plans, although you did approve a waiver for the lighting plan... Right. They have given you details of the full cutoff lighting on one of the sheets, and they have shown where the wall pack lighting, which is very minimal, is going to be. That said, as you can see from my memo, I did direct your attention to the Conservation Commission and Tree Pond's Protective Association memo, telling you what they were recommending. Again, suggesting that you make up your minds on what you wanted to add. Before I go over the conditions, about one of the comments from the public about master plans and whether this site plan was in line with the master plan or not. Words for word from the town council from Drummond-Woodsom is this comment. With respect to master plans, as you probably know, the Supreme Court has held master plans or mission statements for planning and served to outline general goals for development, but they are not enforceable regulations. Rather, the town must apply its regulations when addressing proposals. The planning board should be mindful of the master plan as they rule on different projects, but should not use the master plan as a means of denial in and of itself. Thank you. The other comment I wanted to say, and I think it's been addressed over here, is about the issue of the bridge, whether it's there or not, and whether Lebanon will provide funding or not. You're aware that I'm involved in the DOT process for getting that bridge funded and rebuilt. The town put aside all the money that's needed. As a matter of fact, it's put aside more money that's needed for that bridge than is required. What Lebanon does is what they're going to do. That's their business. And whether the bridge is germane to the issue, it really is up to you to decide. But the bottom line is that there are no additional campsites. There are not planned to be additional campsites because there was a decision made by the zoning board to say no to additional campsites. And that those accessory uses are going to be for campers only. So there will be either no additional traffic or very little additional traffic. Finally, there was a comment with... Whether or not you would vote to add a condition to show all park model RVs, which is a little strange when it comes to looking at your site plan regulations. I want you to think about this. UNH has made the statement that compacted gravel is almost the same type of impervious surface as roofs and asphalt surfaces. So every campsite has a compacted gravel pad, which is the same as whether the park model RV is there or not. So that's all taken into account in their existing site plan. Finally, I want to call your attention to number seven, where I did agree with the Milton Tree Pond's Protective Association. And in bold on your sheet, I added, "And the town may contract additional testing with all cost to be covered by the applicant." If you read them, I ask you to switch eight and nine, because it doesn't make sense. So nine becomes eight, eight becomes nine. And I, despite Mr. Tillsley, Attorney Tillsley's... And I, despite Mr. Till, Attorney Till's objections, I, I still recommend the condition 12. And you really need to listen to this closely because the point is that if there are no additional buildings or structures or impervious surface areas that are not already depicted on the existing site plan, then they don't have to do it. And that may or may not be the case, but I'm still recommending to you to add condition 12 that says the applicant shall add any building, structures, and impervious surface areas that are not already depicted on the existing approved site plan to the revised site plan prior to the chair signing the plan. I'll let the, I've given you a speak for itself unless you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Peter had a motion on the floor. I just moved that we add remaining part of condition seven that sends bragging, which covers the additional testing.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I guess I'll look at it. Clarify what, what that one is.
You must include that, this.
It's there, but it's not on there.
Always favor? Aye. Go. You want to take all, all town planner recommendations for this? Number 12.
Third case, number 12. On number 12 again? Where's the details at?
You chose number 12, bro.
You want me to read it again?
Yes.
Okay, condition 12 recommended to be, the applicant shall add any building, structures, and impervious surface areas that are not already depicted on the existing approved site plan to the revised site plan prior to the chair signing the plan.
Okay, did you have some discussion on that?
Sure.
I want to address this to the board or, or the town planner. So with that being stated, is that excluding campers and RV models?
Yes.
I don't want to.
See, again, this is a ministerial issue. It's a code enforcement issue. And the point is that park model RVs are exactly what the code enforcement officers said. They're not permanent structures. They don't sit there forever. But let's say that they keep them there forever for the use of campers. Number one, they're not being allowed to be expanded with, on, on new camp sites because that's already been decided. That's what I've been saying about this, is that the impervious areas there, whether there's a tent, a pop-up, an RV, or a park model RV sitting there all or part of the year because of the compacted gravel pad. And it's the same in every campground. So the answer is, those things are already shown on the existing site plan that's been approved. And you, you would not think it would be common sense to add tents, RVs, move on and off to a site plan every 25 minutes.
Thank you.
Excuse me, four comments. He can't hear you. 91A, or I say 91A says you have to have a public meeting in public. Please make your comments audit or auto. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the question I had for my peers is this. If it's a requirement, we're going to have this requirement, so that should be across the board. That means all the butters and everybody else in town that has something comes up, goes to site plan review. That means everything you should have posted on that should be as is. So that means we need to make sure that that's the case. It doesn't just apply to a new applicant. So when you come up with your new applicant. So that was my question.
My questions and comments on the town planner recommendation.
Does it need to be read again?
I'll second it.
Comments? Hearing any of those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. It will be added to the town planner recommendation. These are amended. These are agreed upon. We need the, the waivers and site recommendations. This could approve. Regular staff recommend approve revised site plan and light from requirement with the following condition. The owner signs plan set after the plan for the pool. The applicant, their engineer, instruction lead, the participant, mandatory pre-construction meeting, plans, and construction study. Three, since the project does frequently have a NOI in order with SWPP under the federal CGP, those documents shall be filed with town. SWPP shall be submitted to the land use office as soon as received and ordered. Complete the stormwater management agreement between the town and the applicant. Stormwater management agreement shall be mandated to mandate a recurring maintenance and inspection schedule for all stormwater treatment and infiltration infrastructure. The agreement shall provide the inspection report performed to the applicant shall be inspected. Shall respect on the required schedule and submit said reports to the land use office specifically for all soils, burns, fire retention areas in the schedule. The agreement shall mandate engineer oversight inspection of stormwater infrastructure. Funds from the applicant will be necessary to pay for said construction inspection. Stormwater management agreement shall become part of the initiative approved. Four, as part of the stormwater management agreement, the applicant shall conduct a quarterly inspection of the campground, shore lines, other areas reported, and status of stormwater runoff and catchment and infiltration infrastructure. Submit an inspection report with folders in the land use office for the file. If determined there is undue runoff to runoff in any location unidentified in stormwater management, the campground shall prepare an engineering plan to correct these defects after review by the town and the engine department. The rival services shall appear, remediate, and mitigate all defects. Five, requirement for annual report July 1st, land use office shall be added to a stormwater management agreement. Two, discharge of any kinds will not be directed in storm rage or stormwater treatment or infiltration of infrastructure. The owner shall tend and NHDES discharge present price of operation approved and expired. Monthly inspection and maintenance reports of a groundwater drain infiltration suspension and pool water holding tanks pumping event record shall be submitted to the land use office and to the NHDES upon their request. Seven, the campground should take water samples from the grounds of the campground and no participating others' properties and should have been tested by NHDES accredited lab annually to certify the groundwater activity not being damaged by pool or spillage discharge. Lab reports shall be submitted to the land use office annually. If any adverse condition is found, the campground shall dispose of the discharge if it is certified as well as facility. In the town, they contract additional testing with all costs to be covered by the applicant. Eight, the applicant shall agree to submit a dollar amount to the town sufficiently. Nine, the applicant's engineer shall prepare the details, surety estimate of all stormwater quality infrastructure and submit to the planning board, consultant, consulting, consultant engineer, prior to the chair signing the site plan revision. Then the applicant shall agree to submit a dollar amount to the town sufficiently paid for the planning board's consultant engineer for construction inspection of all stormwater quality infrastructure and pool supply water and rain infrastructure. If the agreed to amount is large enough, the applicant shall submit additional required funds. Project completion will be made available and should be refunded from the applicant. Ten, an amount of payment for the planning board's consultant engineer for engineering inspection and construction of the stormwater quality infrastructure shall be determined according to the actual plan for mandatory pre-construction meeting. Eleven, add the subject construction permit to the site plan plan for chair signing the plan. Twelve, we've already read it twice. Do you have a motion?
Move that we make these twelve decisions. Part of my.
Second.
Discussion. Are there any of those in favor? Aye. Get this.
What was? Have we accepted the plan? The plan is accepted.
Yes. So now we're just going to the next question to follow with conditions.
All right, Mr. Chairman. Have we approved the conditions in our state?
Second.
I'll second those.
Discussion. Will I hearing any of those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
You're not going to have time to bring it back tonight, are you? You're not going to bring that back tonight? Hey, I've been wanting to come down Saturday. Two tons of electricity. Do that again. That was too much.
If you all want to stand around and talk, please do it outside. We have the meeting to finish up.
G.I.S?
I want the signs to go up to the front. I'm going to go talk to the ass. Shows location, the type of signage it is. It seems prepared. Come to all last night and have a regulation. Anybody sees things outstanding, they don't like to let me know.
That's right.
Well, that's other business.
So you can either contact the, or the town office or whatever you want to do.
Yeah, I wanted the board to know that Danielle McKenzie got ahold of Ashley and I because she wants to lower her parking lot pole lighting for the venue up at McKenzie Farm, of which you approved the site plan a year and a half ago or so. She wanted to know if she needed to return to the planning board to lower the poles. And I told her that she didn't, but I'd have.
On third inspection and maintenance reports of water drain infiltration suspension and pool water holding tanks pumping event, records shall be submitted to the land use office and to the NHDES upon their request. Seven, the campground should take water samples from the grounds of the campground and will participate in other's properties and should have been tested by NHDES accredited lab annually to certify that groundwater activity not being damaged by pool or spillage discharge. Lab report shall be submitted to the land use office annually. If any hazardous provision is found, the campground shall dispose of the discharge into a certified disposal facility and the town may contract additional testing with all costs to be covered by the applicant. Eight, the applicant shall agree to submit a dollar amount to town sufficiently paid for the planning board's consultant engineer for construction inspection of all stormwater quality infrastructure and pool spillage water drain infrastructure. If the agreed to amount is large enough, the applicant shall submit additional required funds. Project completion will be made available and should be refunded to the applicant. Ten, the amount of payment for the planning board's consultant engineer for engineering inspection of construction of stormwater quality infrastructure shall be determined according to the school plan and mandatory preconstruction meeting. Eleven, add the simple construction permit to the site plan prior to the chair signing the plan. Twelve, we've already read it twice. Do I have a motion?
Moving, we make these twelve conditions. All right, fine.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Get this.
The question was, have we accepted the plan? The plan was accepted. Yes.
So that was just going to... Next question to the board with the conditions.
All right, Mr. General, I believe we approve and the conditions have stayed.
Second?
I'll second those.
Discussion? Well, hearing any? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you.
We'll see that's when it's...
And I can always copy that there all the way. You're not going to bring that back tonight? Hey, I've been wanting to come down outside. Two tons of electricity. Do that again. That was too much.
We have a meeting to finish up.
If you all want to stand around and talk, please do it outside. We have a meeting to finish up.
You're not going to have time to bring it back tonight, are you? You're not going to bring that back tonight?
No.
Hey, I've been wanting to come down outside. Two tons of electricity. Do that again. That was too much.
If you all want to stand around and talk, please do it outside. We have a meeting to finish up.
If you all want to stand around and talk, please do it outside. We have a meeting to finish up.
The G.I.S.
Shows location, the type of signage it is. It seems to appear. I don't know. Last night, we have a regulation. If anybody sees anything outstanding, they don't like, let me know.
That's right.
Well, that's other business.
So you need to contact the... Boy, it's the town office or whatever you want to do.
Yeah, I wanted the board to know that Danielle McKenzie got ahold of Ashley and I because she wants to lower her parking lot pole lighting for the venue up at McKenzie Farm, of which you approved the site plan a year and a half ago or so. She wanted to know if she needed to return to the planning board to lower the poles. I told her that she didn't, but I'd have to inform the board. And if you overruled me, then I'd tell her and she would return to the planning board. And I'm telling you.
It makes that better.
It makes it better.
There's less lighting.
Yeah.
Less lighting.
The cone of lighting is much smaller. It's improved.
Yeah, Larry should have kept that.
Yeah, where's Larry doing it? Have you?
He would light this one.
Yeah. He's a bad guy. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
One final comment. This process you've just, I think, finished today has been exceptionally hard on you, both personally and professionally. And so it was probably done hard on you.
It's truly a busy disrespect that town people have. The small hall deal, boy. Nobody gets paid for any of this. You sit here and take that abuse. It's not right. And it stems, and their attorney made a good comment. These, there were illegal meetings held to discuss this application. Illegal meetings. There should be a formal complaint filed against the Conservation Commission for holding these meetings illegally. It's both federal and state law. And either one... Anybody else want to go on?
I'd second that. I find that it puts potential legal issues at stake that they can't finance and all they're going to finance, whether they want to or not. Because that's when the app gets sued.
They're under control.
Absolutely.
Everybody in agreement with that?
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Are you going to file something, David?
Yep.
Okay.
And I'd like to now go to the pool and minutes by seventeen, two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, I'll make a motion except as written. Second?
They're perfect. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
He's already told me he's not going to be for the next meeting. You're going to get a motion on.
The site law for twelve, right?
Okay, the last is you. A adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll second.
I'll hold single. Thank you, boys. Thank you.
Now, they didn't give me any instructions on whether we should be stacking the chairs or anything.